Okay, seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I welcome everybody. Glad to see you. Darcy, go ahead and call rule.
Moore?
Here.
Mar? Moody?
Here.
Instrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the pledge. Everybody on the table, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item four is perfection and approval of the agenda as printed. Is there a motion for that, please? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no, carry. All right, item five is public comment time. Anybody out there want to talk about? Public comment? Come on up. Please tell us who you are.
Hello, my name is Kayanne Smith. I am a registered dental hygienist. I work for the Clayton County Visi Nurse Association as the I smile coordinator. Through the Visi Nurse Association I smile grant, we cover eight counties in northeast Iowa. So Almackey, one of those counties, and we provide gap filling preventative dental services at schools, community events, things like that, with clinics. So we work closely with community members in Postville, seeing the kids at preschools and can start second and third grade dental sealants, and then, of course, women and children at the wait clinics. I wanted to express my strong concern about the vote to remove fluoride from the community water supply. Water fluoridation is one of the most effective, safe, and equitable public health measures that we have. The CDC has named it one of the top 10 public health achievements of the 20th century. There's decades of research, including studies reviewed by the Dental Association, the CDC, World Health Organization, and they consistently show that fluoridated water reduces cavities in both children and adults by at least 25%. It's important to remember that tooth decay is a number-one preventable chronic disease in children. It causes pain, infections, missed school days, difficulty eating, speaking, and learning. Fluoridated water is one of the simplest and most cost-effective tools that we have to prevent the disease of decay. I also want to acknowledge some of the common concerns that arise when discussing water fluoridation. Some people worry about cancer, toxicity, or other health risks, but the research is very clear. The National Cancer Institute has found no association between fluoridated water and cancer risk. At the levels used in community water systems, fluoride is not toxic. It's carefully regulated and monitored to remain safe. And dozens of systemic reviews have shown no credible evidence linking community water fluoridation to adverse health effects. On the other hand, we know exactly what happens when communities stop fluoridating their water. Cavities increase, dental treatment costs rise, and the burden falls hardest on children, seniors, and low-income families who may have the least access to dental care. Removing fluoride would undo decades of progress in oral health and increased preventable pain in expense for the residents of Postville. So I urge the council to reconsider the vote on community water fluoridation to protect the health of all residents, especially our most vulnerable. So thank you for your time and your commitment to public health, and I'm happy to answer any questions we have regarding fluoride.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Well, I think at this time, Devora has got a comment. I think this would be a good time for you to do that. Because this was not taken lightly, this subject, you know, and the council did vote to to get rid of the fluoride treatment. But we had lots of things in front of us to look at. And so, but Devora has written a nice commentary on that, and I think you folks as residents need to listen to this one also. So go ahead, Devora.
I want to acknowledge the public comment we heard this evening regarding water fluoridation and oral health. I respect the concern and the professional perspectives being shared. I do want to be clear about my role as a city councillor and what was actually at issue in this decision. My responsibility, our responsibility, is not to adjudicate scientific debates or to decide which medical opinions are correct. That is not the function of this council. Our responsibility is to determine whether municipal utility is an appropriate and proportionate tool for a given purpose and where the public funds are being stewarded responsibly. In Postville, we were treating nearly all of our water, roughly 99%, of which is not consumed, at a recurring cost in order to deliver a health intervention to a very small fraction of actual use. From a utility and fiscal standpoint, that is difficult to justify. With respect to equity, universally available is not the same as universally beneficial. Supporting low-income and immigrant minority families does not require a moving individual choice or embedding a medical intervention into an essential service. It means improving access through targeted, voluntary, and effective programs. That balance, fiscal stewardship, appropriate use of public utilities, and respect for individual autonomy is what guided my vote. The ordinance has passed, and no further action is before us tonight.
Thank you, Devora. So, like we said, we respect everything that you said, but it wasn't taken lightly, the vote. All right, so thank you. Okay, let's go on then to item six, Jack.
My name is Jack Knight, and I sit on both the Almackey Energy District Board and the Planning and Zoning Board, which has been involved in energy issues as of late. I do have a handout. Rather than have me read one of these passes, hold your own. Rather than have me read this presentation, and by the way, I'm not here to ask for money. Okay, I thought I was till I opened my pack and I have. The Almackey Energy District is an organization that we work with the Windisheek County Energy District. In fact, they kind of made us possible. So we share board members with Windisheek, and we share a technical and design and audit people with them. The organization is designed to access energy conservation and energy production grants, both public and private. And although some green energy projects have been scaled back or canceled lately, there's still any number of funding streams and tax incentives that are still available. So the death of clean energy, that was a premature way to think about it. Energy production. Just recently, Almackey County, we both designed and a solar siding ordinance and a wind siding ordinance. This was made in conjunction with Almackey Energy District. Well, just de facto because we share board members. But because we didn't want to prohibit or ban solar and wind projects, but we wanted to have the county have a say in where they are, of our say. And that was probably the most significant work the Energy District has done. In fact, in writing these ordinance, we have allowed for, and de facto encouraged, medium-scale and, of course, any kind of solar-wind project in the individual farmer business. We made sure we looked at stuff on those tomes, but we also made ordinance be flexible enough that a medium-scale energy facility could be built. And that is what I wanted to tell you. We have to work on Almackey Energy District. In fact, rather than asking for money here, I'm offering our services, have our technical person come and do an energy audit on any municipal building. Has anything like that been done on this sort of plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, actually, like we've been installing arrays on any number of churches in the county.
See that?
Churches covered in that area. They're doing like that on the, churches have got, we've had several church clients with solar panels.
Okay, okay.
Nice size arrays up in two batches. Yeah, we can continue to do that. So once again, rather than asking you for money, I'm letting you know what we might be able to do for you.
Sounds good.
If there's any questions. Do we have any speed readers here, Larry?
All right, thanks, Jeff. Okay, thank you. All right, then. Item seven is boards and organization budget request for FY2627. I know we've got some folks out there, so if you would, just one at a time, please.
I was gonna say, are you gonna call us up?
Well, I'm not sure which organizations. I think you're all organized orderly, so.
Hello, everybody. Val Rankey, Almackey County Economic Development Tourism. Hopefully, you all know who I am by now. I'm here tonight on behalf of Almackey County Economic Development. I'm going to give you information, which you probably have seen before, but there is a letter in regard to our request. Behind the letter of that request is kind of a snapshot history of your contributions since 2010, just to give you an inkling of where we're at. And then behind that, you will see our annual report that we would have handed out in October 25, which I believe you were at that meeting. Thank you very much, because that's how you stay in the know. And then with that report, you will also see kind of the budget that we would have handed out at the meeting. And then the last page is just kind of a snapshot of everything that we have planned in regard to marketing tourism dollars in 2020 space, just so you have an idea. Because I don't know what you guys know or don't know. I don't know if you open up a newsletter from us and how much you stay in tune with us, but we are a very busy office with one and a half people. I think what I'd like you guys to know is that our rate, when you look at our six communities, is $3.25 a person, okay? And it's pretty much loosely been around $3 for decades. And everybody is charged according to whatever the census number would have been. Like at some point, we moved to the 2020 census, all right? So if you look at that, over the years, you'll see your history. You've never really given the full amount for a variety of reasons, and we've worked with that. But I do need to let you guys know also on there that I have a number of communities since 2010 and probably even before that that have paid at the rate. And so I am trying to be fair and just and all of those good things. I have one community, if you look on there, that has not given for a couple of days since I started, but that's because they don't like me, and that's okay. I can get over that. So I just want to let you guys know that that is the request that we have. I know that you'll take that and consider it, but I just need you to know that we are also working with Almackey Energy District. I guess you left. And we have had some really good meetings here in Postville. And I know that we've looked at the library and then looked at other things, and we just continue to provide that service. I want you to know that the Iowa Rural Development Council, a few years back, we sent a team kind of from the Postville area. I would love for you guys to have that back on your radar. I know that there are some people already interested in going from Postville, so if you want to have a Postville team, I can give you all kinds of info, but just know that it is a really good piece of information for you to go as a team and learn how to do things within a small group.
You're pretty bad. What was that last thing you talked about?
The Iowa Rural Development Council.
Yeah.
That this year will be in Dubuque, and it will be in April, and teams of three go. And in the past, we've had a team, I think Brenda and Darcy and myself went down. We usually have a couple of teams out of Almackey County go down. It is a way for you to network, but also learn how to work with housing and childcare and workforce and all of those good things. And I can get you more on that. Okay? The other thing would be is I'm looking for the contact for the new apartment manager out here east of town because Tyler is no longer the person. And I'm just wondering if anybody has that. If you do, if you could give that to me, that would be really, really helpful. We will have leadership training that will be very county-focused that will start off in the fall. There will be six sessions, just so you know, Almackey Clayton Electric, and I know North Lights. I believe will be two of the locations that will be holding that. You'll be getting more information about that. We will also have an economic development tour this spring that will include Postville because of the things happening in Postville. And by the way, it certainly looks great. Another thing that I guess I wanted to just touch on is some of my other communities have like an economic development committee or group or something. And I guess I want to connect more with you guys, but I need somebody to connect with. And I realize that we're all busy and we all kind of do different things. But like in Lansing, there's an Economic Vitality Committee, and we meet once a month. And do I always make it? No. But do I make it quite a bit? Yes. Waterville now has renamed their group to the Waterville Community Development Group. And now I'm like, okay, you guys, so if we're gonna get more focused that way, I want to be there if you want me there. In regard to VaCon, because they have a city manager, I work pretty closely, even though Gary's gone and now Grayson's there. The plan is that we'll be working pretty close together. Postville is a good-sized town. There's a number of things going on. I need to know at some point who you want me to talk to. Because I can't talk to all of you all of the time, because there isn't enough time. So who is that lead person? And whoever that lead person would be, I am happy to jump on the phone every week and just have a five-minute discussion, or we meet and we go and we talk about some things that are happening. And because I don't know where you're at with economic developer, community developer spot. All I know is that it does impact, and I feel like we've kind of lost a little bit of contact. So I'm here to recognize that, and I am here to fix it. It's just a matter of. So you guys have a discussion about that. Talk to me about it. And I am a phone call away. I'm usually in town at least once a week, sometimes twice. I'm here. And if there is something going on that I can possibly, it may not be me, but I might have a resource for you. I think that would be a good piece of the puzzle. Do you have any questions for me, any concerns? Don't get really mean or anything, but I mean, if you have some concerns, I'm all about it. Anything.
You're funding, you're calculating 3.25 per person based on our.
The 2020 census.
Yeah.
And just so you know, our group, we receive about $65,000 from the board of supervisors. Each one of our banks, five out of the six banks in the county, give us $2,600 each. Each city besides Harpers, and then pretty much everybody's at three and a quarter per person. Our utilities kick in in regard to Alliance, Black Hills, and Almackey Clayton Electric. And then we have memberships, and that is based on the number of employees. And we probably in total have about 100 members, okay? Val's issue is that there's one of me. So to grow my membership, I don't exactly know how to deliver to everybody, right? So if I'm going to grow the organization, it's the chicken and the egg, right? But those are where my dollars come from. And let's say that's about $130,000 roughly, okay? And that pays me, and that pays a part-time assistant, and that, you know, bill bringing expenses to travel, stuff like that. The other thing that we do receive is hotel motel tax, and that is something outside of city limits but within county limits. And that, we had no idea what kind of money we would get. And right now, it's just under $200,000 a year. Half of that goes to the county board of supervisors. They can put that in the general fund and do as they wish. The other half comes to our office. And what happens with that money per the, it's not a regulation, it's not an ordinance, whatever it is, those dollars have to be used to put heads and backs, okay? So that back sheet that you see in that little packet talks about all the things that we're doing in 2026, right? So that's anywhere from print to radio to billboard to social media. But a portion of that also pays me because a part of my job is being the tourism director for the county. So just kind of FYI, that's how that works. That's how we're funded. And I just want to make sure to share that with you guys and hope that you'll take that into consideration. And if anybody has any questions, you can always reach out to me. And like I said, contact for the apartments, looking for that, and whoever the lead person is for economic development, just let me know, and I'll start communicating directly.
Thanks. I don't think, we probably don't know yet who that is, do we, Darcy? We'll find out.
Okay, that works. Thank you very much.
Next.
Just a one pager for you. I have an extra with a typo out if you want one.
I'm good.
Okay, so I'm Crystal Duffy, library director. Last year, I had a pretty lengthy, involved presentation about our funding, and much of that hasn't changed, so I figured I could be a little bit useful in more brevity this year. So I am back asking for another $4,000 increase for our city donation, which would bring us to 60,000. Somewhat good news, not for the other library, but we aren't last anymore in the entire state for funding, but it isn't because of our increase last year. It's because another library got a huge decrease, and now they're last. So we are the second least-funded library in the state for our city donations for our size library. That doesn't, we're not comparing, you know, apples to oranges, just apples to apples. The average funding for a library of our size is 200,000. We're at 56,000. Back in 2001, our city donation was $55,040. So we are getting only $960 more than we were 25 years ago. I don't know if you know about inflation, but the inflation from January 2001 to September 2025 is 83.4%. So we would need $102,000 just to have the equal buying power of the funding we had 25 years ago. I am not asking for $200,000. I am asking for not a very big amount, and I am asking for the funding to be an exceptionally small amount compared to other libraries of our size. This little box of some numbers, I just wanted to share some of our stats for the last fiscal year, the data that we turned into the state library. And I have, you can see at the top of the column, my first year, my second year, my third year, we've increased the fines and fees that we received by 92% since I started. So we aren't just sitting there not trying to get money, but a library is not a money-making entity. It just isn't. We've increased our non-governmental incomes significantly, 127% since I started. That's things like different grants we can apply for, donations and things that come from places. The one bad number we have is that our circulation is down pretty significantly, but the budget that I've cut every single year so that I can pay my staff more is our book budget. We also had to get rid of HOOPLA, which is some digital stuff that counts as circulation, and well, we just couldn't afford it. So we got rid of that. So getting less books and getting rid of digital resources means circulation is down. I would like for this to be the first year I don't have to cut the book budget. The reason I've had to do that is it's basically our second largest budget besides staffing. Right now, our staffing budget is basically the entire city donation. So the whole 56,000 goes to staffing. That's split amongst three people. So the three of us are making 56 grand a year collectively, okay? So I don't want to cut the book budget, but there's really not another place for money to come from. Our people attending programs is up 113% since I started, doubling, more than doubling the number of people that come to programs since my first year. The number of programs that we have is up 73%, and our door count is up 33% since I started. So our library is being utilized more, and we are having to do more with essentially not much more financially speaking. And then just at the bottom, I have a little chart for you. I handpicked cities that have less revenue than us, significantly some of them. That's just property tax revenue. All the other accounts get complicated, and I believe that our donation from the city comes from the general fund. So we're at the top there, Postville. That was from 2024, I think. And if it's a different year, Darcy, I'm sure will know. But the revenue was 812,000. We got 56. Strawberry Points revenue was 681,000, yet somehow they get 20 grand more than we do. Sydney has 609,000 property tax revenue. They get 69,000 a year. Stewart, 596,000. They get 72. Fayette, with only 454,000 in that property tax revenue, basically half of us somehow giving $99,000, almost 100 grand to their library. So what I just was trying to show you was that cities with less resources are able to fund their libraries. And in fact, every single one of those is giving more than 10% of their property tax to their library. The back of the paper is just a list, probably not complete, of organizations that utilize the library. And this is a lot of different organizations that use the library in any given week. I would say all of those except Heart and Soul, because it's not a thing, because we finished. It's probably, they've probably come in the last year. So that's all I'm asking for. My data mostly came from the state library, this really fun packet. Despite being at the bottom of funding and needing the lowest-paid library director in the state, our numbers as far as even circulation, even though it's down, nowhere near the bottom. Programming, nowhere near the bottom. Computer use, nowhere near the bottom. The resources that we offer are nowhere near the bottom despite our funding. And I don't think that's something to be proud of. I think it's something to be embarrassed about. I'm not proud that we work as hard as we do for the funding that we get. And every one of us at the library goes above and beyond to do something in different ways. Carrie has been helping the people, primarily senior citizens, for over 16 years with technology and avoiding getting scammed. She probably helps anywhere from five to 10 folks a week coming in saying, is this a real email? And it's usually not. Helping people with their technology and their devices. Stephanie goes above and beyond to be interpreting and translating for the people that come into our library. And I've got my hand in all kinds of pots. I think we know all the things that I'm doing, but we are going above and beyond, and I'm not asking for much. So any questions or anything like that? All right?
You say circulation is down. That would be the book.
That would be physical books and digital.
Taken over by electronics and computer stuff.
Well, that was the pattern. My first two years, our circulation was up. Physical circulation was down, digital was up. And so I thought, well, that's just kind of how the world is going, but this last year, total circulation is down. But digital circulation is down, of course it is, because I had to get rid of this entire program called HOOPLA, because we can't afford it. So all of our circulation is down. But if you cut funding, a number of books, circulation's gonna go down. I mean, that's just.
What did HOOPLA provide that was so essential?
It wasn't essential, which is why I cut it. But it provided eBooks, movies, TV shows. The thing about HOOPLA was that it was on demand. We have another eBook service, and if it's a really popular book, you might be waiting months. Whereas with HOOPLA, boom, you get it. The problem with HOOPLA is that we paid every time someone borrowed something. So every time someone borrowed a movie or a book, we were out anywhere from $3 to $5. With Libby, it's, we just pay $9 a year, no matter what we use.
Do we still have Libby?
Yeah, we still have Libby. That's sort of subsidized by the state library. They don't pay for it, but it's cheaper because we're on a consortium. So we still have eBooks. We still have audiobooks. We still have, HOOPLA also had audiobooks. It's just it was like pay-to-play every time, whereas Libby is like flat rate. We could use it not at all. We could use it 10 times more than we do, same price. So to me, that was worth it.
That's good business on your part.
Yeah.
You know, appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next.
Sorry, I don't have any handouts for you. I'm Ben. I'm with the ambulance service. I'm here to ask for the same amount as last year, so I believe that was 9,600. We did get an increase last year. We're very appreciative of that. I do have some statistics for you. So in 2025, we responded to 202 calls per service, which was up above 20 calls from the year before. That generated 214 reports. So call volume has gone up. In the past couple of years, we have been able um, been able to purchase um an automatic vitals machine for our backup unit, um, with funding through year and through grant. Uh, we've gotten two portable suction units, um, which are very helpful when you're outside of the truck, which seems to be where you always need those.
What was the first one that you bought?
Uh, automatic vitals machine. So, um, the suction in the truck doesn't get used near as much as what the portable sections do. Um, they're very handy, they're very helpful. Uh, they get used more than what we would like them to. We did, um, over the last two years, gain two new EMTs. Um, they have done very, very well for us. Um, they are absolute go-getters. They go on a lot of calls for us. Um, and both of those classes were paid for through, um, the service. So. One of them is Joseph Feldman, and the other one is Schmull, and they get prices. Yeah.
So how many do you have there?
We have like, so between us and Claremont, and we just share one roster. Our money's separate, but we share one roster. We have like thirty-five on the roster. We have probably fifteen that are active. So.
This is just EMTs?
This is everybody. That's drivers, EMTs, advanced EMTs. I think for Postville people, I think we had seven people that went on at least twenty calls last year.
Any paramedic?
Um, so I am a paramedic, but we don't run as a paramedic service. So we run as an EMT service. We do have the ability to go to the advanced level. If myself, Ashley or Andy are available. So, you know, we can provide some pain management. So, you know, we've got increased costs with pharmaceuticals and some of the advanced supplies there as well. Yeah.
And what was your question?
Uh, nine thousand six hundred, which I believe is what we got last year. Questions?
Look like it, man. Thank you, sir. Next.
Oh, good. All right, I am here on behalf of the Postville Youth Sports Committee. So these expenses are just from this past summer rec season. Uh, summer rec just consists of baseball, softball, Little League, T-ball, and uh, swing team. This is the list of expenses, but as you can tell at the very bottom, um, those are our main expenses, our big ones. So coaches and umpires, that's going to be the biggest one due to we're having a harder time finding volunteers. So we're incentivizing high school kids, any, anybody from the community, um, and they get a second for uh, um, things. With the generous donation last year, we were able to upgrade some of our equipment, that being a pitching machine and a pitching mound. And uh, through the Wellness and Rec Center, we were able to receive grants for these. So this is actually just half of uh, those costs. So that pitching machine is roughly around forty-five hundred. So with the donation we received last year, we were able to really increase uh, the nice facility that we have at the city. Last year, we received five thousand. Lack of a better word, would like to be in that ballpark. Uh, so really, really, man, appreciated everything uh, the city has done for the youth sports committee. Any questions?
And this is what you had to pay, actually had to pay?
Yes.
Whether it was you got a discount or whatever.
Yep, yep. So those are after the.
So are you under the, like, the Wellness and Rec Center? Under them? Are you separate from them? Or separate, work with them?
Yep, it goes through them for insurance purposes. Have to, uh, pretty much.
We have your bank account from, you know, pay your coaches and umpires.
So it pays, it goes through the wellness center, and then they, or they let us know what we.
Okay.
So you're asking for?
Five thousand, uh, just anything around there. But again, uh, didn't want to be too specific, so any guidance about it, yeah. All right.
Right, thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Next. Nobody's jumping up here.
I think I know everybody. Um, I'm here on behalf of the daycare.
Tony, can you tell us who we are, who you are, because we are broadcasting.
Oh, sure. Uh, Tony Gerke, representing the Postville daycare. I think this city council has given five thousand dollars to daycare the last couple of years. We had a lot of tough decisions to make this fall. Um, our wage enhancement money that ran out, that's a program's done with. We maxed that out, I think, about probably as well as anybody in the state. However, with that money going away, we had about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar deficit to make up. That creative, Christina Drehels, um, we took her out as our county analyst, keeping help out with some of that stuff, so help us get some of our numbers straight. We were a little fortunate that we had an individual, one of our teachers, um, left. And working with Jordan Everling, who's our new director up there, we decided that we could probably forego replacing that position for the time being. Um, and work with the teachers that we had. And then the school had, uh, had an open position through their food services, uh, which we were able to move the person who primarily does that for us over to the school, kind of a, a co-situation. So they were able to take on, uh, her salary. So uh, those were really two huge things, I don't think. And we'd have a hard time balancing the books of those two things that happened. We still had about a thirty thousand dollar shortfall after those moves. Um, so we spent a lot of time looking at the salary structure and what we would have to do. We ended up reducing salaries across the board, the teachers up there. We were able to provide a higher hourly wage than what it was before the, the wage enhancement. So we were better off than we were a couple of years ago, but it, it still, you know, it hurts with some people. We took down three bucks an hour. That shows up. I haven't heard from Jordan that anyone has left. Um, we had a meeting with employees in October. Laid it all out, both as a, as a school, as an organization, how it was working, and then we did an individual sheet for each teacher, and to show them exactly how we got to their new salary. Wasn't a great day, but like I said, as far as anyone, no one, no one, um, has left. And then we were still short. Um, so we are doing, um, a modest tuition increase. We kept it pretty, pretty even, five, ten bucks, that kind of thing. So, um, we were able to get there. Our total budget, uh, for this, this calendar year is right around four hundred and twenty-one thousand, I think. Budget would have spent four hundred and twenty thousand and nine hundred. Um, so I've said it from day one, you know, we, we don't turn down twenty-five dollars because we'll find a use for it. So every, every dime helps, every nickel helps. Um, we certainly appreciate. I, I know we hadn't come to the city, I don't think, until a few years ago. It, it all helps. So uh, that's kind of where we're at. Um, we will get through the year. And kind of reevaluate where we're at with the number of kids we had up there. That always makes a difference. Um, financially, there's a big difference for us between fifty kids and sixty kids. Right now, I think we have fifty-one. Yeah, it, it kind of changed for months and months. We did have fifty-one right now. We did have some expected, uh, infant enrollments coming up in February, March. So that's pretty much it.
Are you at capacity as far as your student-teacher ratios?
Um, it's flexible because it's, it's different for the different age groups. So we're working really hard to kind of stagger that to stay at our maximum. So if a, if a child would age out of one age group, but we don't have room for them necessarily in a ratio, we might keep them there for a month or two until another child moves out. So we're working hard to not have a situation where we have one child in an age group and one teacher for that one child. We, we, we've kind of bumped into that once or twice, and that's been kind of a point of emphasis with Jordan. The parents are okay with that. Nobody's really worried about your eighteen-month-year-old goes to nineteen months.
Right.
So it, it, it's working out that way. Um, it's just something he and I, all the time, I said, we're expecting some more infants. The whole thing is just doing all the time. You know, you don't know when you're going to get kids for sure, and if a family picks up and moves, you know, it might lose two or three kids from one family. But for the most part, yeah, I think we're that was another point, I guess, we had in December is looking at our, our teacher student ratio, you know, backward how one teacher, it looks like it's, it's pretty on track, so.
So three years ago, we had that plan, right? So that wage. So all that money's gone?
Yeah, unfortunately, the state didn't give us a lot of options for how to distribute that. We had to spend the entire amount within a three-year window. I didn't agree with that, but, you know, those, those were the rules for taking the money. So, uh, it would have been nice if they'd even given us five years. We would have done less, but stretched out further, of course.
And then the state abandoned the program.
Yeah, I'm on the coalition, so I feel like I should speak, but I'm not.
I'm not, so I can say it.
Yeah, there, there is money in, yeah, of course. There is some money coming in.
Yes, we have about eighty-six thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six to deal with, to distribute between the four childcare centers and X amount of in-homes. It's quite a system that we've got figured out, but yeah, it's dwindling. For Albuquerque County? For Albuquerque County, but there are some dollars that were earmarked for Postville, and there's still, you know, your portions that you're going to get, but it's far cry. Because we needed to have two hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to get everybody back to where they needed to be in regard to making a full wage. We're at eighty-six, going to twenty twenty-six.
The coalitions for the entire county.
Yeah.
That, that includes like the individuals at the care site.
That are licensed and registered. How many of those do we have in Postville? Honestly, I'd have to like go look at these people. I didn't know that they would, they would be that. But across the county. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I'm just curious.
Any else for Tony?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Did you sign the sheet?
I did, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Right, anybody else? Okay, then we will go along to item eight, and that's school parking record.
I am Paula Yerch. I'm just my own at the daycare.
Yep.
We were here last month and spoke about the, the equipment that was like of Davis Park at Long Park. And just wanted to remind everyone, and handing out those posters, you can share at your place of work or church or wherever. And then, um, just share with as many as you can about our fundraiser that we're going to have on January thirty-first, Saturday, so with the golf course. And we had the soup and chili supper bingo and a silent auction. So I just want to make sure everyone is able to come and participate and see what all we should have. Um, more picture layout of, of the equipment and kind of a the vendor that we're working with is going to have a video that should showcase kind of what it would look like in like kind of what our park looks like, but applied to a kind of thing. So.
How much do you have to raise?
Three hundred and fifty thousand, I don't. But I mean, we're going to, we have to, we have to raise.
That's for everything.
So that's, yes. We have to raise so much before we can apply for these grants. So we're working with our city. We've spoken with them and, and, and we have to raise a certain amount. And then we'll do it in phases, um, depending on how the next, you know, few months and go and see what we can start to apply for.
Hundred fifty or hundred thousand dollar basis?
Right, so the more we raise, then that helps with the grants, the matching grants. So if we can at least get halfway there, that would really help.
In one shot?
Not necessarily in one shot.
Damn expensive fishing trip.
Yes. So actually, the ship that is on the flyer is actually a piece that will go into our park. That's probably the most expensive piece that will go in.
Is there an address or contact information for people who are Jewish, who can do their car make on Saturday? If they'd like to send donations or fundraisers?
Actually, um, I could translate that flyer and put that information.
I mean, because it's on a Saturday.
Right, right.
Even if it's in heat, I'm saying, is there an address where people can send donations?
Sure.
I'll, they're not there in person.
Right. I will translate that and put that information on there.
Contact information.
Just like I said, okay, okay. I mean, I could put it.
Yeah. Address on the dotted sign works.
Where to send the money, Paula?
By free, by free. Nope, I can do that. That'd be fine. And then I'll email it to you.
Yes, please.
Okay. Or you could just send it to me.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bad to have that anyway, in case.
Sure.
Somebody can't come.
Right.
They could mail donations too.
So the silent auction is going to be on Facebook. So I'm going to have a link to that. So, you know, anybody, anywhere can bid on that as well.
Take in donations for sale?
Yes, well, there'll be, um, we were going to run it through this app too, but we probably won't be able to do that, but we will have a spot for donation, yes.
I mean, like for.
For mailing.
You're looking, we're talking about prizes.
Yeah, I'm talking about things that you, if I donated something for you to put on your silent auction.
Oh, yes, sure.
Sure, that'd be fine. Yes, yeah, we are looking at an app, um, as well. It's, you can use it for like silent auction or donations, and we just haven't gotten that set up yet, but we're still working on that, so it can continually be present each month.
Those ads, is that right? Let's see us on Facebook.
Um, it says it, there's a Facebook silent auction.
Even a QR code.
Um, I don't think we can do a QR. Not, not right now.
To go to the site.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not that smart.
You guys can come to tech time at the library, we'll help you.
Unfortunately, that's when I'm working, but we'll get that figured out and stuff.
While you're up, yeah, how's this ice skating?
Well, if it ever get cold, stay cold, it would be a lot better, but it's kind of.
Then I'll get an opportunity to use it?
I think they will this weekend. Sounds like it's going to be quite cold.
Roger, so some, a couple gals drive up and got their skates on and they went, put their foot down. Winter, winter, yeah. I mean, they didn't put their whole weight on it, just tapped it.
Yeah.
Just hasn't been.
Good as naked weather.
No, no. So hopefully this weekend, it sounds like. No, no. So, hopefully this weekend, it sounds like it's gonna get cold, so.
You say hopefully, because the ice right now.
Yeah. So, yes, it's kind of been a struggle with that, but, but hopefully we'll get some use out of that.
Thanks, girls. Thank you very much. All right, then item nine is decant pump replacement for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, there was information about that that Chris had wrote about in your packet. Uh, Chris is not with us tonight, but you know, his recommendation is to go ahead with that. Uh, so, any questions? I think. Nancy, you've talked to him, right?
Yeah, so, um, the cell digester decant pump has failed and it's not repairable, um, so we need to replace that. It'd be purchased through Blazek Corp. in the amount of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-three dollars. So, I need, um, approval to purchase that pump replacement. I do.
Yeah. We have approved the purchase of that, uh, decant pump from Blazek.
All right, there's a second? For discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Don't say no? All right, new pump coming? Okay, then, uh, kind of, well, the, so the item ten is, uh, collection system repairs.
That's the twenty-two thousand.
Yes, ma'am, twenty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
So, this is the televising that we had done by CIT. And we had, um, three fault areas on East and West Green that need to take priority and be repaired immediately. Because they're compromised and allowing a lot of groundwater to infiltrate. Um, so we're looking at a total repair cost of twenty-two thousand, six-fifty. And that's with CIT Solutions. That's who we have our contracts with.
Yeah, they have to do it soon as possible.
Yeah.
So, what did this pictures tell us? I didn't know how to.
Yeah, so that is the pictures from the televising that's showing the infiltration.
So, is the light part where it's cracked and it's coming in or?
Right, right, yeah, I would say the light part is showing you that where there's an issue.
Be here at the right time.
We get called.
In groundwater, underground, does it come in even if it hasn't rained? Even if it's been snowmelt, the infiltration keeps happening, penalty timeline?
Sure, yeah.
Does it go up and down with the moderate rain?
Yep, it would, yep.
Was this old cast iron or something, or what's, what, the clay tiles or what?
No, I don't think the clay. I, I guess I couldn't tell you the material of the pipe.
I don't know if it says on there or not.
Is it just spot fixing or is it like the whole line? The line?
So, they can fix a bike one in underground without having to.
Right, yeah.
It just says it's an eight-inch pipe by four-foot. Since the stroke here, the holes.
Right. Not the entire thing.
They kind of, this, this, they kind of put a sleeve in there, don't they?
Yeah, we've had it done before.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's one at the four-foot and one at the six-foot. There's two that are four-foot.
Is this part of the budget of that street department?
What?
Is this part of the budget of the street?
It's the sewer. This is just sewer line, yeah. It's part of their maintenance budget, yeah.
So, this is just expenses that happen.
Right, yeah.
We planned for and you gotta fix some, you gotta fix stuff.
Make it worse if we don't.
All this leads up to, whereas, you know, is this taking away money that we might have available to donate to groups?
You cannot donate utility money at all, no.
This twenty-two thousand. Just not take away the donation money.
We do, you would not use utility money for any type of donation, no.
Yeah, we say this is on east or west.
East and west. There's three areas that are needing repair.
Yeah, so we need a motion to approve that one too.
I move that we go ahead and approve the repair by CIT.
Yeah.
Up to resolutions.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Don't say no, all right? Get those problems fixed. Okay, item eleven then is canine. Um, so, we lost our officer, uh, that, our canine officer, and, um, she, uh, you know, was the handler for the canine, but the canine belongs to the city of Posto. And, uh, uh, so she went to, uh, the city of Monona to be employed. And, uh, they have actually, uh, they would, they will buy the dog, uh, at that figure there of seventeen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and eight cents, right?
Well, that takes care of all of the expenses that we had to get that dog.
Correct.
I say, I move that we sell it to them first.
How about the equipment that we have in the vehicle?
They don't want it.
They don't want it.
We tried.
Tried to do a package deal with the charger.
And why, why, what's the whole affair? They wanna spend, buy one?
Don't know, didn't ask. They're, maybe they're just coming up all around without a cage, I don't know. But we didn't make an offer for the charger, because that's still gonna be set up for the canine and.
And we offered, we tried to make an offer with the cage and the collar and all of its equipment that go with the dog, and they didn't want that either.
They just wanted the dog.
They just want the dog.
Is that legal to just put the dog in the backseat and drive around?
That's not my, that's not for me to be concerned about, that's.
What, what do you have to put on?
For the.
It's a cage.
Oh, the kennel?
It's not counted car, this is counted.
Kennel, what we had about a.
Fifteen.
Fif, no.
Then you had the bite suit too.
So, about two thousand dollars, which I've already, um, got connected with some other agencies that are interested in that stuff that I can.
So, they, it's not just gonna sit in a store?
No, no.
You don't have much money anyways.
No, I'm going to post that and they said they will, there, one agency is interested in the bite suit. The other one's interested in the collar, so they're like, send us pictures and.
And when you down to the page?
Yeah, and the cages, I don't know, this. Anybody, you know, the cage, anybody can buy the cage.
Yeah, any dog.
Yeah. Yeah, the cage could go to anybody that had wants it for their dog in the house. Inside cage.
Just the bite suit, the bite suit and the collar is a bigger deal.
What's that?
You should just maybe keep it for anything that you impound.
Uh, we got enough, we got big enough, two kennels in an impound, we don't need the cage.
What happens to all the stuff in the car?
Stays in.
It's gotta stand to grant.
The collar is still considered a transport vehicle, so we can still utilize a car to transport prisoners and pick up dogs in town. We have a canine vehicle, pick up a dog. Until, right now, my goal is to concentrate on replacing the officer, not a canine. So, uh, that's in the background for me, for, for right now, for the department, so.
Good, um, did she meet the requirements that you had on her at the end of the day?
Yeah, yes, yep, yep.
And the vehicle?
Yep. Happy. But, the thing was that.
Becky, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I missed it.
All right, any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Don't say no? All right, we got that done. Okay, item twelve, resolution number one-four-seven-three-dash-twenty-five, Posto Iowa Housing Code Plans of Inspection. So, that's, was in your packet, uh? Guess the question being is, do you want to, uh, did you look at that? I mean, that was with, uh, Devora's and, and, uh, recommendations, right?
Yeah, she worked pretty closely with Dan Morgan.
Yeah, with Dan Morgan, yep.
So, I have a question now, um, did you get a call from, what was that man's name? Hershey, the Hershey that, that was gonna skip it with you there? Has she contacted anybody about meeting the? I'm just curious if anything happened.
To start a landlord group? I have not heard anything more on that.
It was supposed to happen right away, so I just.
You said they are?
No, I said they, I, I have. What are the, what's the difference between the green and the yellow highlighting?
Yeah. Um, those are the changes from your last meeting, and then Devora, you worked it down. So, how many times her and Dan Morgan went back and forth? So, I guess if you're in agreement with this dra, final draft, you can go ahead and pass the resolution tonight. If not, let me know what we need to change again. We'll go back to it.
I thought it was well-written and it covered everything.
Okay.
Good job, Devora.
Yeah.
Is there a cure map?
Yep, I, yep, I did get him a clear map, yep.
I guess the only thing I'd like to ask for, direct, like the city is that with everyone's approval that we hold off on the, um, tenant complaint procedure for the first three years of the of the cycle, where, until they get used to doing the regular and the repair, um, inspections and things like that. Because I think if they're, if they're busy doing their regular inspections and having to meet that and the repairs, it's just gonna cause like a paralysis with all these, because we know that there's going to be a lot of complaints possibly. And then it's just gonna cause, I think, um, extra work with, you know, seeing if those complaints are valid or not. And then having them to do two timelines of a regular inspection and a complaint inspection. So, maybe giving the landlords some breathing room to get up to par the first three-year cycle. And then, and then direct the city to accept the tenant complaints at that point. I don't know that I wanna let it go three years. I mean, well, I mean, it's, it's on a three-year cycle, you know what I mean?
So, the first year of the zone one, after a year, then they can start complaining. Zone two, after this, um, second year.
Well, the only reason why I think three years is because the landlords have multiple properties in all three zones, some of them. So, you know, and, sorry?
There's only so many inspectors.
Right, I mean, they have to find inspectors, but, but I think also like, you know, the, the landlords, perhaps, once, while zone one is getting taken care of, they can struggle really working on fixing things in zone two. So, that might lower the amount of complaints that they have as well. They might, you know, work, work ahead of the, the schedule, you know? So, I just think giving it more time to get used to it and just for the first round, for the first three-year cycle. So.
If you still have a three-year moratorium on, uh, renter complaints.
I, I, yeah.
The renters can't complain until, let's say it starts in twenty-six.
Well, they can complain, but I mean, we, we can explain to them that it's, you know, we have to give them time.
Time to respond to the original inspections.
Right.
And then maybe your claim, your complaint won't be justified.
Correct, correct. Because then if it's, if it's found unfounded, let's say, or even if it is, but it just puts the landlord on like two separate schedules that he has to, you know, the complaints, inspection plus a regular inspection. So, I think, you know, I think that, and, and I think the tenants will know that they're on that first three-year cycle where they'll have to pass a regular inspection, you know, and they have to do the repair inspection. So, that might take care of a lot of complaints that we know are there as of day one.
Where are used to unnec, the unnecessary complaints, it's only this one complaint that's, it's gonna get fixed.
Right.
Based on inspection.
But it's not gonna get fixed for three years, that's the one time. Well, but it would be, because, I mean, if it's, yeah, if it's a founded complaint, I mean, there's going to be a regular inspection and then the repair inspections sometime in those first three years, depending where the landlord lives, you know? But there might be a landlord in zone three when he sees that it's not as bad as maybe they were thinking or whatever. And while zone one is going and he doesn't have like a, a timetable that he has to adhere by, he might start doing repairs already in anticipation of his year.
Probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Haven't done anything for twenty years.
Yeah, what's another story?
Yeah, there almost needs to be a hierarchy of those complaints, you know, to not be founded for three years.
Right.
You know, if it's something vital, like a water heater, a heater versus a no screen on a window.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know, who, who determines, you know, the, what is important to one person might be highly important to the next. But, heat, sewer, you know, water, sewer water, the utilities portions of it, you know, something isn't functioning properly should have priority no matter what cycle they're in.
Or if we accept the complaints, but maybe, um, not, not go through the complaint process for the first three years, but let the landlords know that there's been this complaint.
It still comes down to people putting it in writing.
Right.
So. Still comes down to, uh, those that are complaining to put it in writing and sign it. It still comes down to that, so. Maybe they, they still have to come in here and put it in writing. They can't talk to somebody at their church and tell them, and then, who tells someone else, and then they're coming in here and giving me an address. That doesn't cut it. Has to be, the person that's having the issue has to come in here and put in writing for us to follow up on a complaint, regardless of what it is.
And the complaints can start year one? Yeah.
They can complain. Depending, I suppose.
The more, the more severe utilities and basic infrastructure type things, they have to be acted on in the first year.
Right, yeah.
Like you can't have water, sewer, those kind of things.
Right.
So, this would be passing this wood, it's not gonna give them a three-year moratorium to let the sewer keep plugged up. Or to let the water keep dripping or electricity be at all. Correct.
Well, depends where they are in the zone. I mean, when they come and register.
We still have a, we still have a code section that handles emergency health situations. Um, and we still act on that. So, I mean, if somebody doesn't have heat and landlord's not doing anything about it, I mean, highly recommend them to come in here and put in writing to us that there's a problem with their heat, right?
That the landlords should want it.
Right.
But they haven't done, you know, so, I know, so. I mean, I hope this makes a change in the way the landlords treat the, you know, that's the ultimate goal is to, um, get them fixed, yeah, public safety.
Everything's not the landlord's fault.
Right, exactly.
People are destructive and, and then, when the landlord should fix everything behind, you know, if they wrecked, so.
And that's one of the things that they were gonna do if they got that group together, like, have everybody like film their place and.
They bet their tenants?
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have, if somebody is really responsible, gets wrecked in their place, yeah, they don't have.
Am I wrong? There's a process for everything.
Yeah, there is. So, Devora, though, in other words, what, what you would, what you started your conversation, that was, is that different language that's in here now?
It, it's not written in here, I mean.
It's not written in.
Process starts, I guess, from day one.
She was asking for direction, for staff.
Well, I understand that, but if it's, if, if it's not in there, and if you want it in there, I, I don't know how you can pass the, you can't pass it until you get all the language in there you want.
I think Mr. Morgan said, he was just saying that maybe it could be something that we can just sort of direct the city, but not as part of.
Right, yeah.
Will be after the first three years. It was just a, sort of a sidelined suggestion.
Okay. Ready?
Well, we can always amend New York. Yeah, I mean, if it turns out to be a problem, you know, we don't know, you know, it's kind of a gray area that we're walking into. I think, I mean, it's very well spelled out the way they're supposed to do it, but.
Nancy, you, are you okay with this ordinance, why it's written?
Mm-hmm.
So, that, so that complaint process comes down through you, to you, and you have to direct. It's not like you're gonna direct city workers to it. You're gonna hunt down the landlords, but hopefully we have them on. Uh, we know who they are now, or we'll find out who they are.
Well, they'll have to register with the license.
Right, that's how we'll, we'll, we'll the next step, saying we have a problem here. Right, that's how we'll, we'll, we'll the next step, saying we have a problem here, you need to fix it.
Right.
Okay, well, you guys ready to adopt the resolution? In motion.
I'll second that.
Mar?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yeah.
Engleher?
Yes.
Do they have a reading center?
Nope, it's a resolution, no.
Okay, done?
Yep.
All right.
Wow, you guys. Great work, good job. Wasn't just, I mean, there was a lot, there was a lot.
Okay, item thirteen, law enforcement call time county. So um we're just kicking this around, this is discussion only, you guys. So uh we're thinking that, you know, we're down two officers. I, this is hard to believe, but you know, a month ago or better, just a little over a month ago, you know, I was asked by the the paper, uh the postal paper about what I felt really comfortable about sitting in this office for. And I said, one of them was that, well, we had a full police department and bam, and within a month, we've got two done. Yeah, yeah, I should, I'm going to shut up from now on, but so, uh, but that being said, you know, and, and we all know, we all know the cost of, first of all, cost. And then, second of all, to try to find folks, I mean, th- this pod is not very big, you know? And, and although we do, we've got some pretty good applications right now. Um, uh, but, uh, so the idea being, I know when I was a county supervisor, we had, there was a number of communities in our, in our county that had twenty A Ds with the sheriff's department. Um, and that, that's, that's something we can explore, you know, and of course, that's, there's costs with all of these things, you know? And I, I guess my, my point being on that was that because there's areas, there's times when with such a shortage in your police department, you're not going to be covered. So, uh, and I think Matt, you can talk a little on that too, please, if you would, but yeah.
All right, so one of the reasons, uh, the two uh left, one of the, probably one of the main ones is where they went to, they, there is no call out. They times when they are off, they're off, they don't get called in. Clayton County covers for the two towns that where they went to when they, is not an officer on duty. So that was one of the perks of them moving on is because they didn't like the call out times, call out, getting called out. Um, with us, it is part of the union contract agreement that there is call out times. It would be beneficial if we could come up with something like that, to have a county cover us when we're done um for call out, but I, right now, it's kind of hard to do when the county here is not a twenty-four hour service. It's same service as what we are right now, uh, five to three. So the county is in the same boat we are. From three to five, they had no officer on as well. So basically, Elmkey wouldn't be able to count, won't be able to cover us because we would have to basically do the same thing we would do, have to wake up, get up and go if we get called out.
I have a question, so um Elmkey County, I, there's a, one of my neighbors is Elmkey County Sheriff and he works nights.
He does. He, they all work, they work till three.
Till three.
There's, they're not a twenty-four hour service. They're not twenty-four hour coverage of which, of the northeast Iowa, Elmkey's the only county that's not twenty-four hour coverage.
So they do work night, but they don't stay.
Dispatch is twenty-four hour. Yeah.
Something happens at four o'clock, you have a bank robbery, what happens here?
Or are we talking here in town or?
We're talking right here in town, that's like picture up, or shooting here in town.
It would go to dispatch center nine one one.
Okay.
And then they would call us out, well, who's ever on call would call us out, then we go.
You have somebody, somebody still.
Somebody's still on call, yeah, you know, right now, somebody's, just like if someone called you out or one of your employees out late at night for a minute for a back call.
Right, right.
Yeah, so no, there's still somebody on call. It's just trying to figure out maybe if there's a different way approach we can do it because.
So let's say, let's say Clayton County would do that, of course, then we wouldn't have people on call.
Correct. But there's a price with that too.
Yeah.
Is a, from what I've heard, it's a hefty price, so there's just, I want to look at some options, see if there is an option out there that would save us some time, money and officers from saying, oh, I don't want to do it no more because I don't like the call out time. I don't like getting called, I don't like being on call, well.
Well, the idea behind the question is how much legwork you want us to do. I mean, if you guys are saying, no, we're not going to, then we won't, we won't do that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Because everybody that you've got, kind of got good interview potential, nobody is licensed, everybody have, would still have to do academy.
Nobody certified, correct.
So I mean, even if that was a bing bing tomorrow, academy is.
Yeah.
About three months?
So say if I hired one, if we hired, the city hired one here in January, into January, fingers crossed, that individual will go to the May Academy and that individual will be done in August.
So we wouldn't have an officer, a fourth officer.
Until August, end of August, which we did that, we had three officers for the past, it was like almost two years, two and a half years, three years that we worked with three officers.
And they're gone, other than you.
Yep.
We had a burnout. You know, we got to get you guys some, some help.
Right.
To potentially lose another one if we don't give you some retreat.
There'd be, uh, I mean, there was going to be. Uh, right now, I'm, my status is, I've already had a meeting with the officers that I'm not going to expect them to do. I mean, I'm giving it, them the offer, if they want to work OT, work OT, if not, I'm covering it. And then I do have one part timer, so.
We do have a part timer?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and he is doing tremendous right now on stepping up to Clayton County making, who, who is that? Um, he's the chief of the marmac.
So he's not willing to be full time?
No, no.
So can we use lost?
But, right, so um half of the local option sales tax goes to police, yeah, and um it actually pays for the officer's salary that left. This was one that was paid with lost.
I'm saying, so could, you could use those up to.
Right, just, but just remember, lost is half is the streets, half is so you can't spend, you know, have, it's got to be an equal split because auditors do look at that.
Have you figured out how much it costs? Let's say it's a hundred bucks an hour?
Just in one county, we figured it out, it's a hundred bucks an hour per officer, or was it?
No, it was eighty dollars, so twenty, twenty was the vehicle.
And then there was something else.
Sixty was the officer.
Depending on.
So it was eighty, eighty an hour.
That was on the contract with the.
And I'm guessing, you know, rates probably go up, you're probably looking at a hundred bucks an hour.
That was the.
That was Clayton County.
Clayton County.
Now, what about, you've figured out, like, or maybe you haven't had time, over the last like year or six months, how much it costs us to have uh somebody on call for those hours?
Well, that's what we got to figure out, because according with the union contract, they have it in their union, what it, what it costs for call out time, if they get called out, it's, I don't remember what it is, but it's, it's a little more on weekends than it is during weekday.
Yeah.
So we just got to put the pencil, the numbers together and see if it'd be feasible.
So if they, if nobody gets called out, we don't pay them?
Correct.
No, you're still paying on call, it's so much a day. Yeah, so it's.
And I was not just to get a call.
No, no.
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 Well, if from the sheriff's office, it is.
From sheriff's office, it's from our department.
Our department, it's not.
No.
So it's twelve fifty, Monday through Friday, twenty-five to be on call for the weekend. But then they get paid overtime hours if they're called out.
If they're called out, then they get paid their.
Their overtime rate.
Okay, but if we contract with somebody, you pay that no matter what, or?
Oh, if, I believe, I believe it's only if they get called out.
Right, if they're on call, yeah, aren't they?
I think.
Yeah, we haven't, we check into that.
No, it's if they're on call.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's only if they get called out.
Okay, we'll have to clarify that, because we haven't, we haven't dug in.
Yeah, we haven't looked into it.
No, no.
We're just throwing this out there.
We missed that.
Well, I mean, it's worth looking into if that's really a major reason why they're losing people, I mean, but, you know, whatever. Uh, but, I mean, I would say look into it and then if it's feasible, we'll try it.
All right, you got.
Okay, all right, well, okay, we'll go, go on for a minute. Okay, item fourteen, and it's the consent agenda, uh, anything in there you guys want to talk about?
Just the police does have uh three, four, three potential applicants.
But they're not certified yet. They want to be certified, but they have to go to the school academy.
Yep.
They can't work before they've gone.
They can't, no, they can't.
They can?
They can work underneath, under, under.
Does that mean riding in the car with you, or does that mean on their own?
Well, if I wanted, if I wanted, I don't want to do that, but they, some people, some departments do, but that's not going to happen.
You got to evaluate if they're qualified, don't get themselves hurt, shot, whatever.
Right, that's where they go, would go through FTO training.
What?
FTO training, field training with a field training officer, so.
And that might be enough to let them go on their own?
Normally, what we do here is they will go with another officer as a passenger.
Yeah.
Know the ropes on the days and nights, shifts.
Right.
They can help assist, they'll be able to still carry a firearm and everything, just not going to put them out on the street by themselves yet.
Yeah.
To make their own decisions.
Training at the academy.
And then the training through the academy, when they're done with that, they come out, they, we can put them back into an FTO training again, or else put them right out in the street. Normally, we put them right out in the street because they did their sixteen weeks of training.
They got to know how to be safe.
Yeah.
Right.
Have you proceeded with the uh offer to have those guys do the, those three applicant people do that testing that you can do now?
I bother the in the process, they.
With all three?
Of the three, one of them got two of the testing completed, just needs to do one. The other one has got one dead, needs to do the two, because they went through other agencies. And I already got those results, so yeah, there's going to, I mean, this, the one that I'm going to be working on here next week should be um a pretty quick process. And that individual already is in the law enforcement field as a dispatcher. Work, has worked dispatcher for four years. So, so he would know the ropes on the calls and warrants and stuff like that. Just doesn't have the training for a full-time officer. So it's in the works, hopefully.
Yep, things are moving.
So one officer is in the works and then however this pans out with the call, on-call thing, if it doesn't work, then we'll have to hire another one?
No, we're going to have to hire two right away, I mean, of the, yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to have them, of the three that I have now.
Two or?
Two will be, if it works out with the, yeah, we'll hire, get hired and get them going.
Yeah, yeah. They're not going to go to the academy at the same time, no?
They can, that's entirely up to the quicker they go to the academy, the better we're going to be fully staffed.
Academy's not, you can't just jump in anytime, you said May was the time, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's three, three stages in the academy, January is already started.
Okay.
Then you have May, the second round, and then September will be the third round. So if I, if I hired two officers, my goal would be to get at least one of them into the May Academy, if not both. That way it'd be both done in August.
Oh, sure, go, yeah, go right ahead.
So I, I don't know enough about it, but maybe because we can hopefully get some information, but there's like a, I'd like to suggest to the members of the fire commission, maybe that they follow up with this grant from the American Red Cross.
Grant, they will just come in and do it.
Yeah, took it back, yeah.
Yeah, and that was the red, you may go.
Yep.
And that was the Red Cross at the library a couple of weeks ago, and they have been looking for communities that have need. And I was like, we found it, um, and they would like to install smoke detectors, they know we have a large number of rentals in town. They would like to install smoke detectors in our apartment buildings and houses. They, they claim they can do several hundred units in one day, like one period, it's all free for us. Um, I just thought it could be good timing right now with us doing these rental inspections and it would be a nice show of like supporting our landlords. Um, so I do have the contact information um for the folks at the Red Cross, they're out of Des Moines, but they come up. Um, and then I think one of the folks was also in Decora, so, yeah, so they're interested in supporting that and, and many more things. That was just sort of the initial, let's try and do this, and if the city likes how this goes, we have other things we can do.
Um, and these are not wired in or are they portable or?
I, they're professionally installed, they're to whatever state standards there are, I'm not an expert on that, but.
Probably batteries and if you, if you do this, eh, um, have Red Cross teach them how to change your batteries on these smoke detectors, because I know Ben will confirm with me, every time we go in to a building, they're beeping, and I'm like, change your batteries, and they're like, what, half the time they don't even know what the beeping is.
Yeah.
Right, Ben?
Yes.
My neighbor's house had eight smoke detectors, but I did not find that out until all of them started, I had no idea how many we had, yeah. So that'd be something we'd be interested in, whether that's free.
So is it just for like the rental properties, is it just?
It's for everybody, they will put them in any property you want.
Because I know like the apartment complexes up in North Flex and out by Grand Meadow, they have wired in dialer system.
Right.
Smoke alarms in every apartment already anyway, so.
But a lot of these rentals that are not at house and buildings might, yeah, so they were willing to work, whatever.
Yeah.
They were.
Either they're beeping or else they paint over them. And you, and they, you can't do nothing with just painting over them, they don't work.
I believe there's also an education component to it as well, and they offered um that also in Spanish, so. Um, and I think there's also brochures and things, which I know they haven't at least taken with in Spanish. So it wasn't just, we're going to slap a smoke detector in, it was a whole program that sounded very, that they've done across the state, so.
All right. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept it as it's printed?
Go ahead, don't move.
Any further discussion, had all of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Who say no? All right, thank you. Item fifteen, resolution for money to pay the bills, motion for that.
Motion to be declined.
Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Mar?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Engelher?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that brings us then to item sixteen, more public comment, if there, anybody up there? Nobody? All right, I think, I don't think I've got anything to talk about, do you?
Just remind them of that special budget workshop on the nineteenth.
Yes, yes, budget workshop on the nineteenth, you guys, city council at six o'clock.
Depends on you.
Is that the one that said six and then?
Set six, no, it's just your workshop.
This is, this is their first door.
Yeah.
Yeah, one at seven.
Does Tuesday work better?
I can't, I can't do Tuesday. You can't do Tuesday.
So Becky, what'd you say? You, you got a meeting at six?
Six and one at seven.
You dropped down a one, oh. So that's like Monday.
Can we go earlier?
Yeah, can you guys come earlier?
No.
You probably can't.
You mean, are you in the day?
Yeah.
No, no, you mean.
Yeah, I meant earlier in time.
Like five thirty?
Nineteenth, seven days later, twenty sixth.
Oh.
That way for doubt. Or Wednesday?
Could you email us with another possibility, so we can look at our calendars?
Yeah, we can, let's get it, let's get it taken care of tomorrow then, all right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We need to get at it, so, yeah.
Let's go, everybody's gonna be here.
Oh, yeah. For sure. We'll figure that out tomorrow. Right, anything else? Darcy, come, uh, council comments then?
I'd like to make one comment. I, you know, I go into library quite a bit, and I do have to say that they are very busy. And there's always someone on the computer, there's always someone on the stack, there's something going on all the time. And we are very blessed to have such a wonderful library. And a good director as well. I just, I just have to say that because I love our library, hate if we didn't have it.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say no? Very, thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.